This is Tom Delta. It's B-E-L-T-H-R-F, seventy-four Beechwood Road in Orinelle. Mr. Stone, I have a couple of questions. And I won't be repetitive. It depends what happened. Could you just answer this question? Was the Elm Street Bridge closed when you did your study?
Yes.
Yes. And then you made a statement, and if you could clarify a statement, that you took into consideration the traffic from River Road, correct?
We counted the traffic from River Road, yes.
Yes, okay. Did you consider any other traffic?
We counted traffic on Main Street at River, Main at Madison, Madison at River, River at Demarest. So all of the intersections surrounding the property were counted.
Okay, nowhere near Elm Street, correct?
Well, the count at Madison and Main is just down the road from that intersection.
The bridge is closed, you're not coming that way. Did you consider any possible flow coming from Orinelle Avenue?
We routed traffic to and from Main Street West, which would then go up to Kindergarten Ave., but we didn't take the distribution that far.
Do you consider Elm Street a cut through or a significant thoroughfare?
I would consider it certainly a connection between Orinelle and Main Street. And it's certainly a point, a connection between those two points, the same as taking Kindergarten Ave., Boulevard would get you in the area.
Just for the record, the majority of traffic that comes from there comes from Orinelle?
Chairman, I'm going to object, but now I'm afraid.
Okay, I knew counsel would object to that, but just... Point, okay. Question, truck traffic. In the last meeting, the other counsel was here, this counsel was not, I had asked a question about the truck flow coming from Madison Avenue, which was in testimony. The trucks would come down Madison Avenue and turn into the shop right, that's how it would go. And I'm confused because now the traffic studies, you were saying that the truck flow is not coming on Madison?
Yes, I did. I said it would enter from Madison and then exit to Main.
Okay, and exit to Main going right or left?
Turning left.
Okay. Are you aware that there is train tracks approximately less than a half a mile, counselor, quarter mile, anything greater than a few feet, okay, but less than a mile? Are you aware there's a train track?
I'm aware of those tracks, yes.
Are you aware of the volume of trains that come on that track?
No.
Okay. Question about your traffic study, and I need clarification because I'm not a traffic person, I'm not a lawyer. What's the difference between traffic volume and traffic flow?
Well, the traffic volume is the actual traffic volumes. We perform our counts. We counted the intersections, left turns, right turns, through movements, we counted the volume. In my testimony, I may have referred to flow in terms of volume. I'm not sure if there's a specific example that I testify to, but generally, we're talking about volumes making turns or traveling through on the roads at the intersections.
What's confusing to me is, in your study, you talked about the volumes that are not, I forget the word to use, you know, the road's going to accommodate, but the flow. In my layman's terms, flow is, you know, I have 50 cars, and 50 cars go through, and it takes within an hour, okay? But those 50 cars, when the train comes, you know, should take, opposite, you know, sitting on Main Street, okay, 50 cars are going to pass in an hour, okay? The 50 cars, you know, when the train comes may take a whole hour, when it's not there, take 10 minutes. The problem is, and I can't get any clarification, is the volume and the flow. In the morning, I'm an Orinelle resident, and I will speak as an Orinelle resident, and I want to know how many times, I'll ask you a question so as I just point this out, in the morning, from seven o'clock in the morning to past rush hour, which you can define it as nine o'clock, nine thirty, whatever.
Chairman, I'm going to object, we've strayed well beyond the question.
No, I'm leading up to a question, counsel.
I don't think you're getting there as well.
Okay? That the traffic is at a stop, okay? It is at a standstill. When the trains come, which they're approximately, and you can make record on this, you can tell me because you're a traffic study person, Pascagoula line, not fooding pre-706 a.m. or post-723 a.m., there's 22 trains.
Chairman, I'm going to renew my objection at this point.
Yeah, now you're introducing testimony to the record. If you have a question that you can predicate with a hypothetical fact, or another way to make a point, ask the question.
Hypothetically, okay, now let's ask the question. How many times in the morning did your study between the hours of seven and nine per weekday? How many, how many times?
Well, there would have been probably one count at the Madison and Main intersection.
So you did one day, one rush, one morning rush hour, that's it?
At that location, and then one at each of the other locations.
No, I'm asking for, again, apart from an Orinelle resident's standpoint, you come up, Main Street, which really is New Milford Ave., but Main Street, you know, dead stop, but I'm, the counsel objected to that, so I'll go with the flow, okay? You only tested one morning rush hour, and that's what your study was basically, was on?
That's standard in the traffic engineering, in our field, that's the way it's done, as long as it's a day that's representative without foul weather, wind schools in session, et cetera.
Okay. And again, just to clarify, you did not, your traffic study did not include any impact as a result of train traffic with the signals coming down and up?
I didn't make any special analysis of that. It's an existing condition and certainly isn't going to go away, but no, there was no specific assessment of that.
Is complete dead stop traffic considered acceptable accommodating traffic flow in your study?
Well, if it stopped because of a train, that's something that's inherent at this location, that's not going to go away, and that's, that's something that is going to continue to occur when the train crosses.
Thank you for making that statement. Thank you for making that statement, okay? That's a factual statement. I hope that goes into the record, okay? Because you right there made a statement as to why the traffic is going to be a complete stop, not flowing a complete stop. Thank you for that, okay? I asked a question last time about increased traffic, truck traffic, because your engineer, again, counsel, my apologies, you weren't here, but your other counsel was, increased truck traffic and potential wear and tear on the road structure, the infrastructure of roads, because of significant weight. And I was told, well, that's a question for the traffic engineer, traffic person to ask, so does your traffic study books, I don't mean that in a flippant way either, in respect of profession, indicate at what point the increase in volume of traffic and weight of traffic increases the wear and tear on the road structure?
I'm not aware of anything, but there are highway designers who specialize in weight and load bearing. I don't specialize in that, I don't have anything to answer your question.
Do you know where I can get that question answered? Is that an engineering question?
As I said, maybe a highway designer could.
One more question. You identified before, and I'm bringing this up for a reason, that you have experience with supermarket projects, and again, this is not a personal reflection, I'm not your professional at all, but you're very qualified engineer, you know, specific banks you worked on, and someone came up and asked you, well, can you name those projects? But before that, your counselor said, well, in your practical experience, for the record, could you say, you know, are there enough parking spaces and there is enough X, Y, and Z, or whatever? And you said, yes. But yet you can't recall any of the specific projects, number one. And number two, do you think that the projects are different between a highway project or socio-economic, you know, where people may take mass transit versus drive? Don't you think that has a significant traffic impact to that project?
I'll answer the first question, which had to do with my recall. I'm out two to three nights a week, and I handle hundreds of projects, and over the course of the past twenty-seven years, I've prepared over 2,000 traffic studies. I cannot immediately recall. I know I've worked on supermarket projects and shopping center projects of all sizes, and if the board or whomever needs a list, I can provide a list. But here tonight, I don't have that specific recall, I just don't. As to the nature of the roadways and so forth, I've said it several times, there's not a lot of traffic out there, and that is why the development traffic can be accommodated. So I can't say that I have a specific site or project that is comparable in terms of roadways. There have been sites all over New Jersey and on all different types of roadways. So I hope that helps to answer your question, but I just, I don't have a specific recall for this.
I'm saying it for the record because I like it to go with the record, and I think the board should ask that question, because the way the counsel phrased the question, you know, in your professional opinion, with your experience, when he makes a question like that, that goes in your record, is pretty definitive information, and if you can't recall one or two specific projects, I have trouble with that, okay? So it's up to the board to ask what each other want. Just the last piece, and it's still troubling me about, you know, I go through River Road, I go down Main Street, but I go New Milford Ave., you know, this, you know, it's a dead stop. How can you say that is, that the road can accommodate more traffic? It can accommodate traffic at one o'clock in the morning, non-rush hour definitely, but rush hour morning and rush hour evening with train coming down, the traffic is a dead stop. So how is that accommodating and the road can handle it?
It's at a dead stop when the train comes. What we've done is modeled the intersections, each of the intersections surrounding the property, and looked at how the added traffic will impact those movements. If the train is stopping traffic, now the train is going to stop traffic later. So what we've, what we've done, as I said, I didn't make any specific analysis of that, what I've done is make specific analyses of the intersections surrounding the property.
And your, and your study really took a hard look at the flow versus the volumes. Again, the flow is, you've got 50 cars, but it takes 20 minutes for 50 cars, but it should take five minutes to leave. The volume's not killing you, the flow is killing you.
And again, in the traffic engineering impact analysis, we're looking at the impact of the additional traffic through the intersections. And I'll say it for the third time, I did not make any specific assessment related to stoppage associated with trains.
Last question, recognizing your professional, this is my third last question, yeah, sorry. When you're over 50, fuck, no. I don't even live in this town, I'm worried things, I'm having an affair because I keep on going over to...
It is, in your professional opinion, recognizing that Elm Street, counsel, don't disagree
with this, okay, is or is not a cut through of the Main thoroughfare, which may have traffic coming from all different areas, don't you think you should maybe relook at your study to see when Elm Street is open? And the bridge is being rebuilt, and it's being rebuilt with additional tonnage, okay, that the volume on that, New Milford Ave. or Main Street, whatever you want to call it, they call it gold, is, is not being looked at right now, and it's going to have to be looked at.
It's certainly something that can be looked at, we simply can't perform the traffic counts now, and I said earlier that some of the draw that we routed to the north and other directions might find its way to Elm. So certainly, it is a direct connection, it could be used for accessing this area. I don't dispute that, but we can't really analyze it until we've got volumes to count.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
John Rutledge, 335 River Road, New Milford. Good evening, Mr. Stone, how are you tonight?
Good evening.
Good, good. Mr. Stone, you testified earlier that what you do is not an exact science, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And that you rely very heavily on the ITE Bible, if you will.
Yes, the Trip Generation Manual.
Now, the Trip Generation Manual is a compilation of studies done by other groups throughout the country, submitted, analyzed, and it basically presents a statistical average.
Yes, it provides us with the ability to estimate trips for different uses.
Okay. Earlier, you had mentioned a phrase, and I wonder if you could elaborate on it, please, a collector road?
Right, I think classified River Road is a collector road, because it's providing a somewhat regional north-south orientation through the municipalities.
I'm sorry, you're saying River Road is a collector road?
I said it's a collector type road.
Collector type, what would it be actually designated?
I don't know how it's designated, for example, in the master plan, I'm not sure.
Can you tell me anything about major arterials or...
A major arterial would be a state numbered highway or interstate.
What about a minor arterial?
Maybe a county road.
Okay, I'm taking information here from the 2004 master plan for the borough of New Milford. Major arterial says nothing here about a highway or anything along those lines, a numbered highway. It indicates a street with access control, generalized intersections.
Chairman, I'm going to object unless there's a question coming.
There is a question coming, Mr. Stone.
Reading a document that is not in evidence and is not capable of being examined is inappropriate.
You're welcome, you're welcome to prepare yourself for the copy of the 2004 master plan.
It's not on record, Mr. Rutledge.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Ask the question, and then refer.
Okay. Are you aware, no, actually, let me ask you a different question. We discussed this small radius representing Madison, Chugino, Main, and River, okay? As to what this particular development will add to the borough's traffic, is that correct?
Yes.
Can you tell me now what the average volume of traffic through New Milford is on a daily basis that this will add to?
I don't have daily traffic volumes, we have performed peak hour counts, so I've studied the peak hours, but I don't have daily volumes.
Would you think that that would be an appropriate measure to see how this would actually impact, as to what percentage it might add to that particular number?
It's done on a peak hour basis for design purposes and for operational purposes. Certainly, there's going to be an increase in the average daily volume, but it would be, we could certainly perform those calculations based on the peak hours that we've looked at, we could calculate a percent increase in traffic volume for those four periods that we've looked at.
I appreciate your willingness to do that for the peak hours. My concern is more directed toward the entire volume of traffic through the town on a 24-hour basis, which now, I believe, will be affected due to the 24/7 nature of the development.
It certainly, certainly can be done, it's not typically done, and I don't have the 24-hour data.
Would you be inclined to accept the fact in the 2004 master plan that Main Street, oh, I'm sorry, let me make that Madison, better stone, I'm making River Road. Two lane major arterial road connects New Milford North through Keenex South, but go down finally into Amherst Hill Park. Primary bottlenecks occur at the Madison and Henley Avenue intersection during peak hours. The amount of traffic that traveled River Road at five specific intersections, which are Herschfield Brook, River Edge Ave., Henley Ave., Valor Drive, and Rich.
Chairman, I renew my objection.
I was waiting, counsel.
Okay.
It's the way to do it, Mr. Rutledge.
Oh, you're right, sorry. My question is, are you aware that according to this particular master plan, extrapolated with the 2.5% increase per year that the ITE indicates, that at, let me just take Henley Ave., okay, at Henley Ave., there are 33,000 vehicles transiting that in a 24-hour period?
I'm not familiar with that data, I haven't reviewed the master plan before.
Okay. I would suggest you might take a look at some of the other statistics in there, and the traffic, et cetera, because it presents an entirely different picture.
Chairman, I renew my objection. You can make whatever suggestions to the witnesses, not a question.
Would you think that looking further into the master plan statistics and extrapolating by that 2.5% growth factor would have an impact or an effect on your current analysis narrowed down to a four by area?
The, I believe it's a 2004 report, I don't know when the data was collected, but all of our data has been collected recently, so it certainly reflected on current conditions. It certainly doesn't, doesn't hurt to review additional information, but I think that the data that's been collected specifically is certainly more current and gives us an idea of what's happening at these intersections nearby. The 2.5%, maybe that's something in that master plan as well. DRT's growth rate for this area would be 2% per year, not that that's going to make a big difference, a factor than the growth anyway for this project.
So don't you feel that, and Mr. Dibble, who you are subcontracted to?
Yes, I'm working for the Zong's on this.
Don't you feel that this is information that certainly the citizens of town should know, certainly the board, in terms of how you're approaching how this traffic might differ?
I'll say, yeah, I have read that report, I can certainly take a look at it, but the data that we've collected is all current, and I would think therefore gives us an ability to prepare a thorough and current analysis that would supplement whatever's in that master plan.
I understand about data, it came up in a previous meeting, as being almost infallible, but also open to manipulation.
Chairman, I object.
I apologize. Can you tell me what a supermarket of 70,500 square feet will draw on a weekly basis in terms of a through checkout register count?
No, I don't know that data.
Okay, this is from the Food Marketing Institute, of which the answer group...
Chairman, not only am I going to renew my objection, I'm going to add, as the chair to exercise discretion in exercising, placing some controls on what's happening.
Can we get some questions without...
Would you be aware that a supermarket this size will draw, on average, 27,000 individual cash register transactions on a weekly basis?
Allow the witness to answer, but assumes facts that are not in evidence.
So noted, counsel.
I'm not aware of that data, and again, the task in the traffic engineering is typically focusing on peak hours, so I don't have any of that data, and I'm not familiar with weekly volumes or draws.
Would you accept that by just a basic extrapolation? I know when I shop, I usually go by myself, but taking that 27,000 customer count and extrapolating it out, and let's say several people have one or two people in a car, by my calculation, and yes, not an expert, that translates into anywhere from 15,000 to 17,000 cars additional coming through this town looking to shop at that particular location.
Chairman, again, I'm going to object, the witness already testified she had no knowledge of the 27,000 number that he's using, so no matter what he multiplies, divides it by, splits it in half, calls it a fraction, she's not going to have any information on it.
Okay. Your, your analysis, you did it on a Saturday and three consecutive Tuesdays.
It was done over the course of different days, yes.
Three Tuesdays in September, as I recall, and a Saturday.
And in February of 2012 as well.
I don't have that information available.
That would have been the update as requested by board's engineer when we went to Main and Washington, and River and Madison was March and April of 2012.
Are you aware that statistically, the least volume experienced at a supermarket, especially one of this size, are on Tuesdays? It's the weakest day for sales in a supermarket.
Chairman, I'm going to object to the question, and allow the witness to answer, but assumes facts that are not in evidence.
Again, I'm not familiar with the transaction data for the supermarket.
Perhaps there might be some data you might want to look into and to see how it might impact or affect your analysis. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Anna Leoni, 505 Boulevard. I'll be brief, most of the questions have been asked. Only four dates were utilized for your traffic analysis, one weekend day, which was a Saturday, one weekday day, which was a Tuesday. Could you please explain why only Tuesday was utilized, why not a Wednesday, a Thursday, or a Friday?
In the original traffic study that you were taking that information from, you're correct, it was all Tuesdays, there was a Thursday supplemental count. Typically, we count Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays, because sometimes people take long weekends, Mondays and Fridays may not be as average or typical as Tuesdays, Wednesdays, Thursdays. So that's one factor. The second is depending upon what other counts we have in the schedule or in the queue to get performed, it just happened that we get a lot of Tuesdays out here. We were striving for decent weather, schooling session, and away from holiday period, so it just happened that they were all Tuesdays.
Okay. In order to have accurately ascertained and reported the traffic pattern of the existing site, so that an accurate determination of the projected traffic patterns impact can be made of the proposed development, wouldn't it have been beneficial to have studied every day instead of just two days?
Again, as I had mentioned earlier, the typical traffic engineering practice is to obtain the counts for a representative or typical day, and that's what we do in studies throughout the state, that's the way our colleagues prepare the studies as well. If we go out and encounter an accident or a road closure, which does happen from time to time, duty utility work or something, the guys come back and we have to reschedule. But otherwise, we're looking for typical days that would be representative of the routine activity.
Okay. Did you take into consideration any school functions, activities that may occur on different days with respect to impact on traffic?
No, I know there was a question earlier about the football games, we, again, we focused on the traditional peak periods and the typical daily traffic, hour, peak hour traffic.
Okay. Did you take into consideration any senior citizen functions which may occur on different days which would certainly have an impact on traffic?
Again, no, we did not count or monitor what was happening at that location.
Okay. Are you aware of the fact that there is an application before this very board for variances for a Korean church to be built just off of River Road?
No, not aware of that.
Okay. The reason I'm asking that is that that would certainly impact traffic. The reason I'm asking that is that that would certainly impact traffic as there are many functions of this specific church during the day and evening hours, not just on weekends, that this church will offer. So would you feel that if this church did go through, if the application went through, did you take that into consideration? Or would you feel that it would significantly impact traffic on River Road?
It would depend upon the times of the services and what type of activities they were holding, let's say Monday through Friday, during what hours. And also depending upon the size of the facility. So if, for example, I reviewed the traffic study and found that there were impacts because of classes on weekdays between 4:00 and 6:00, or some type of after-school programs, then that traffic would appropriately be incorporated as part of the background increase in traffic.
Okay, now that you have this information, will you also take that into consideration or look into the fact that this church may?
That's certainly, that's certainly something that we could take a look at.
Okay, because that definitely would impact traffic. It's not a traditional church where there are services strictly like on Saturday evening.
Excuse me, that is not only outside the record.
No, I'm sorry.
That's not even factually accurate.
No, I said that there's an application.
That it's a non-traditional church.
Well, there are functions every day.
Your comments with regard, it seems no different than any other house of worship.
Okay, I apologize.
What's your distinction? Yeah, I just think that's wrong.
Okay. All right, approximately how many traffic reports have you prepared for mixed-use or commercial development?
I'd say well over 100, and I can provide you with a sampling if you'd like.
Okay. Of the reports that you've prepared, approximately how many resulted in the conclusion that there would be a significant impact on traffic?
Well, it would depend upon the size and scope of the project, because the larger centers would often require some level of improvement.
Okay. Is it fair to say that most of your reports that you have written have concluded that there is no significant impact on traffic or that traffic would be acceptable?
Well, that, again, that would depend upon the type of use. As I said earlier, we've been, over the past few years, much of the development has been redevelopment for smaller scales such as a gas station with a 7-Eleven or standalone 7-Eleven. The impact analysis for something on that scale is completely different than a larger scale or a mixed-use type of development. So it depends upon where the site is, and the nature of the traffic, and the size of the project.
Okay. Your report mentions that you utilized the eighth edition of the trip generation by the ITE. Could you please tell us the publication date of the eighth edition?
I believe it was 2008.
Okay. Is there a more recent publication?
It's supposed to be delivered any day, I ordered it in August.
Okay. The reason that I brought it out was that I looked it up, and there are major updates concerning land use description, or let me rephrase that. Are you aware that the new edition has major updates concerning land use descriptions, trip generation rates, updating of codes to reflect current industry trends, including shopping center, drive-through bank, and supermarket?
I am aware of that, and in fact contacted the ITE to try to obtain the data in time for this meeting, and they told me I have to wait for the book, so we're all waiting for the book.
Okay, once you receive that book, will you be updating the current data?
Again, that is something that we can provide, yes.
Okay. Only because it's stated from the ITE that there are major updates considering?
And specifically references supermarkets, yes.
Okay. Okay. Considering the surrounding streets within the project area that will not have any traffic signals or crosswalks, how would a person with a disability be able to cross the street containing traffic?
Well, again, we talked about this a little bit earlier. There are existing pedestrian crossings, but as to what happens specifically at our driveway, I don't think we're finished with that process yet.
Okay, so that will be taken into consideration?
Yes.
Okay, that's it, thanks.
Thank you. I'm just going to ask to defer my questioning to a later date, based on the submission of the supplemental report today. I prepare my questions based on certain assumptions after reviewing the report that's been on file since February.
Right.
So I think it's a little unfair to have to, I don't even have a copy of the report, by the fact, to have to ask questions, and I think we're wasting the board's time to then have to come back and ask further questions. My only, I do have one question, just for clarification, because I did have some confusion after reading the report within the context of the application. Now, if you go to page 10 of your report, the original report?
Yeah, for the record.
Yeah, Alonzo.
Sorry, page 10?
Yes.
Of the original report?
Yes.
Which was downloaded.
Page 5.
Page 10, you said?
Yes. Now, you made certain conclusions with respect to the levels of service and delay.
Yes.
With respect to River Road and down to West Avenue and St. Broadway, on table 5.
Yes.
Is that based on an assumption that there would be the left turn lane? Or is that based on the existing condition of one lane, one lane each?
It's based on, it's based on the one lane in each direction.
Okay, because, and the confusion is that the left turn lane, oh, I'm sorry, the northbound on River Road, on each of the counts operates at a level of service A, which is basically no delay, yet you believe that there's a warrant analysis performed that warrants a left turn lane. Why would you warrant the left turn lane if it operates at a level of service A?
Again, it's a combination of the through-moving traffic and the left-turning volume. And there are nomographs that we take those volumes, we enter the nomograph based upon the speed limit and the percentage of left-turning vehicles, and if you follow below the certain line, you warrant the left turn lane. So the theory is that in this case, the level of service A is because there's not much traffic southbound. There would be enough theoretical gaps to let that traffic go left in. But because the percentage of left turns in the northbound direction is high, you would make the warrant for the specific lane.
All right, just for my clarification, it assumes no left turn lane?
The analysis and the calculation, I'm pretty certain, is just based on one lane in each direction. I can verify that for you.
Well, I need to know, screen, my questions were prepared based on no left turn lane, and I learned tonight that there is a left turn lane considered.
If you can just give me a second, I can... Yes, the resultant levels of service are based on no specific left turn lane.
All right, thank you. I'm assuming my request was granted.
Well, we're discussing that, even as you're asking us.
So, you know what, before we move on to the next member of the public who's going to ask questions, that was important, I suppose.
Yeah, yeah.
Let's ask Ms. Dolan back here how we intend to proceed. Based upon the points raised by Ms. Dolan, I do think it's admittedly fair to allow members of the public the opportunity to digest the traffic analysis, revise traffic analysis report. Much of what Ms. Dolan testified to this evening seemed to at least leave the door open to whether or not she was coming back to, or having indicated on a number of occasions that, you know, this is, this process is not fully concluded, and there may be additional factors to be taken into consideration that ultimately support the opinion that she offers. Is it fair to assume that we're going to see Ms. Dolan again?
I think it is likely that Ms. Dolan will reappear.
Well, in fairness to Mr. Alonso, I need something more than, like, whether it's likely, reasonably likely, I need a affirmative or negative response to this.
Well, if it's for purposes of completing Mr. Alonso's cross-examination, he should proceed with his cross-examination of all the areas that were in the original report, because the updated report has been testified to, was testified to back in August. The information isn't new this evening. While it may be embodied in a written document tonight, the testimony was given over 60 or 90 days ago.
Well, the left turn issue was not, we're seeing that all for the first time tonight.
That's not entirely accurate, because Dolan did testify back in August that her and Mr. Dipple talked about and designed a left turn lane for the site. All we did is provide a visual aid of what it might look like for the board to see, figuring traffic is amorphous enough, let's at least provide you with a sketch so that you can visualize what we're talking about. So none of this is new, but with that said, yes, there's enough cleanup items where we're likely to have to bring Ms. Dolan back, but there's two components of bringing her back. One is to deal with the open items, and, you know, that is our election to do. And I assume the board will exercise reasonable control so we don't give its staff questions until, after time that Dolan comes back. With reference to Mr. Alonso's request, if he needs to delay a portion of it, I understand that. However, I think he should get started, there's 35 minutes before the board's curfew this evening. There are enough areas.
I'm sorry to talk over you, Ms. Dolan, I apologize. There's also the issue of whether or not any data may or may not change as a result of the recent addition of the manual.
And the question is whether or not that later addition might even apply to us, given our filing date. So there's lots of issues that may come up with that.
That is an interesting issue that I'm not prepared to speak to.
So what I would suggest to you is this, there's areas such as parking, site circulation.
Never established, yeah.
Site access that are not in flux.
I understand.
Those are areas that if there's cross-examination, we should use our time wisely and get it done. I also understand and defer to Mr. Alonso's need to maybe look at the other areas where some of the information may be new to him, and I'm willing to bring her back for those purposes. But the areas that aren't new, we should get started.
The problem is, it's not, it's not, there is new information. She testified that there are new traffic counts or conducted intersections that were not conducted before or testified to before. There's a lot of things, it's all intertwined.
Has nothing to do with parking, site circulation, or site access.
Do you have any questions on parking, site circulation, or site access?
I have a lot, but I have a very lengthy list of questions, and I think it's unfair to the board for me to sit there and pick out what questions I should or shouldn't ask, and which may be intertwined with other questions with respect to other levels of service that she just testified to.
Just kind of back, what's the difference? I'm not satisfied that we have any change in data or anything that has been brought out. I've just not read it either, so I don't know if there's change in data.
My understanding is that they did new counts at intersectional.
At several intersections, yeah, which may make it different, so.
So I don't know what any of that information is, and I have questions with respect to some of the levels of service and intersections, so it's...
I would really think that it'd be best that we bring her back because of possible data changes, we're working in the dark here, and I'm sure you don't want us to be working in the dark. As I indicated, I will bring her back. I think it is just another example of how we're losing time unnecessarily in this application. Please, please let me finish. Site circulation, parking capacity, and site access, there is not a stitch of new data that hasn't been out since February when that report was authored and put into evidence at the first hearing and testified to in August. So I recognize in part, and I agree, to bring her back to deal with the issues that may be new. And if we have to bleed over a little bit for Mr. Alonso, I'm okay to do that because I think he'll be judicious with not asking repeat questions. But I think there's some areas that we can get into and make use of the time that we have.
Make it a problem for a while and reorganize yourself while I talk to the rest of the public.
We'll try. Yes.
Since John DeSantis won that in Vala Drive, since it's been established, or at least suggested, that the square footage of the store that she took her comparison from is only half the size of what her report states, the data that she's got is absolutely useless, and that she has to come in with something...
Let's stop right there, it's not a question, we're the question.
Okay, my question is, knowing that, that your figures were wrong for the existing shop, right, and you were using that as a comparison, and stating to the board that the ITT or whatever it is, parking statistics that you used, well exceeded the existing conditions, when in reality, they may not be anywhere close, don't you think that you need to redo some equations and so forth? And that you definitely have to come back and speak to what the realities are? Is that a question?
Yeah, but she's coming back already.
All right.
It's been established.
All right, I just want to make sure.
Do you want to ask a couple of questions, you had your name at the fore?